Good evening, I would like to call the May 27th, or May 22nd, 2017 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Formal approval of the City Council's regular meeting minutes of May 8, 2017. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements, a special guest. We have a couple things this evening. We're going to first start with Police Chief Doherty, who is going to present some awards to our police department employees this evening. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank council for allowing us to come up here and have this awards presentation in front of you. It's on the heels of Police Week, so it's timely. First thing I'm going to start off with is our fitness award winners. This past year, we enacted a voluntary fitness challenge, and we had people come out and run that. So, the fitness challenge this year was to stand at the 50-yard line of a football field, start with 25 jumping jacks, run down around the end of the goalpost and back, come back, do 25 mountain climbers, run down and back, 25 ab twists, down and back, and then 25 squats, down and back, under five minutes. So, we have seven people that accomplished that this year. If I could have the following officers come up, please. Mark Burns, Nick Davis, Sergeant Sayers, Tony Vedder, Josh Warren, and Jamie Johnson. And I just want to present each of you a fitness ribbon, which can be worn on your daily uniform or your dress jacket, like this is here. Congratulations. I would like to make a special note that the fastest time this year was Mark Burns. So, thank you all. You guys did a great job. I'll have another one this year, and I'll let you know what it is. And I can tell you, none of us looked good after we ran it, I can tell you that. The next award we have is Meritorious Service Award. If I could have Sergeant Sayers come up to the front, please. Sergeant Sayers is the recipient of Meritorious Service Ribbon. It's given, it's a light blue ribbon, given to an officer involved in a life-saving effort without danger to himself. So, in the early morning hours of July 24th, 2016, Sergeant Keith Sayers was dispatched to Lindley Drive on an unresponsive female lying on the driveway. Upon arrival, Sergeant Sayers made contact with the callers, who advised she may have been the victim of an overdose. Upon checking the victim's pulse on her neck, no pulse could be detected. The victim's skin was cool and clammy to the touch. Sergeant Sayers radioed Officer Jamie Johnson to bring the AED unit to Sergeant Sayers. He began CPR. The AED unit was attached to the victim, and it started, and it stated to begin CPR. Sergeant Sayers performed CPR until medics arrived on scene. Belbrook medics began breathing efforts on the victim, and after combined life-saving efforts of police and fire, a pulse was detected. Victim was transported to Miami Valley for further treatment. In speaking with Captain Haas of the Belbrook Fire Department, she advised it was very clear that the life-saving efforts performed by Sergeant Sayers when he first arrived saved this woman's life. So, for life-saving actions, Sergeant Keith Sayers is awarded the Meritorious Service Ribbon. I'll present you with this, the citation. I had, we've never had one of these at the police department that, which I'm aware, certainly not since I've started, so I had the, I had reached out to the American Police Hall of Fame, asked and submitted Sergeant Sayers' incident to them. So, real quickly, I'll read what the president of the organization said. Dear Sergeant Sayers, it is my pleasure to inform you that you have been awarded the Life Saving Award of the National Awards Program of the American Police Hall of Fame. Our staff members join me in commending you for your valor and service. Your professionalism in an emergency situation displays your dedication to serve the public as a law enforcement officer. Your selfless act saved a human life, and your actions should be recognized. The diligence and bravery you exhibited set an admirable standard for all to follow. Sincerely, Chief Jack Ridgick. I'll put this in here for you. So, with this comes another citation from them. Life Saving Award to American Police Hall of Fame. Do you accept that? And lastly, this award came with a life-saving ribbon, medal, and a pin. That's with that, so that is yours. Well done. Next person we have, the last person we have, is our Leadership Award. If I could have Lieutenant Carmen, please step forward. What do I say? Lieutenant Carmen does a lot. He has been a leader here for a number of years, but since he and I have had a chance to work together, I think, I think his leadership ability has really started to crystallize. So, just a few things that Lieutenant Carmen does. Organizes Sugar Maple and Alliance Club festivals for, for all the officers. Stays on top of our Department of Justice grant for body armor. He's in charge while I'm away, swaps out cruisers when we buy new, takes care of the cruisers' day-to-day functions and maintenance. He's responsible for posting monthly activity stats with comments. I believe you guys get those. He's an Alice trainer, and he's done that a few times in the last couple of years. Helps officers with any computer-related issues, thank goodness. Keeps our Facebook page, Twitter, up to current status for the lobby and such. And finally, successfully completed a law enforcement executive training, which was this past October in Buffalo, New York, which is designed for manager-level supervisors. So, I would like to award Lieutenant Steve Carmen this maroon ribbon, signifies leadership ribbon and his abilities with us, and with that citation that goes along with it.
Wow, this, when Chief Doherty told me I was going to win this award, this was a surprise for me. Coming from the police staff and the command staff, this certainly means a lot to me. My time here as lieutenant, I've always tried to get the best technology into the officers' hands to do their jobs. I think we've seen a lot of changes here recently. The new SUVs, MDTs and cruisers, our new Body Cam initiative. I think these are all things that help us deliver better services to the public, and I think that's very important. I'm very proud of our officers, from top to bottom, working hard every day. My evening sergeants, who keep their ships running like a well-oiled machine. My thanks to you for your hard efforts. That being said, it's, it's easy to look good when you're part of a really good team, and that's what we have here. Thank you very much.
Okay. That's all we have. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and I'd like to thank all the officers here tonight. So, great job, and also glad to see everyone come out, just about everyone, I think. Or is it, I can't count. Just about everybody.
Just about.
Just about. So, thank you all for coming out. A great presentation, Chief, and thank you for all of your service. Counsel, anyone else have anything? Moving on, and don't feel like you need to stay unless you want to hear about walkable communities. We have here tonight Keith LeBlanc from Green County, and Keith has been, why am I saying Keith? Ken has been helping us with our Walkability Workshop that we held on May 22nd, I think, and this is a follow-up to that, or one held April 12th, this is May 22nd. And he's going to give us a little summary of the product that we've put together now, and how we're going to move forward, and what some of the next steps are.
Your head name and address and...
No, you're good.
Okay, well, I want to thank everybody for participating in the workshop. We had a real good turnout, and as I pointed out to many people, this is the highest workshop turnout we've had in about 20 that I've worked with. And Pickwin and Troy were competing to try to get two, most people out up in their workshops a number of years ago. So, what we, what we're trying to do here is look at downtown. Mark told me when we were working on the, looking at the plan update for Belbrook, that the downtown area would be one of the major aspects of the plan update, and I said, "Well, there's works, a walkable workshop, there's a good way to start that off." Miami Dollar Regional Planning Commission, where I used to work and did these, agreed to help with it, and so we had a good cooperative effort between the three entities here. And looking at the downtown, there's, we first looked at the principal downtown features. So, if you look at downtown Belbrook, it's Franklin Street, there's public facilities down here, there's Belbrook Park, the major anchors are Dots and Dollar General on each, each side. Oh, sorry. Is it that red one?
No, the right arrow. There you go, right there.
Yeah. Sorry. Dots, Dollar General on each side, and Belbrook Plaza is kind of a concentrated area there in the middle. Lots of eateries, if you start counting them up, and then nearby residential. And when you look at the, at the features, there's also churches, insurance, real estate, law offices, so you have a number of services down here. You've got, you know, a lot of variety, and somebody could actually live downtown here and kind of exist without going out of it too much. So, that's a, that's a good thing. Also, some of the other key retail anchors, in addition to Dots and Dollar General, are the bank and the gas station in the middle of town. So, those, those main things bring people in here every day and generate your traffic and so forth. In the, and looking at the rating sheets that were passed out at the, at the end of the workshop there to everyone, and they filled them out, we had some questions, and the results of the answers were, "Did you have room to walk?" And these are on a scale from 1 to 6, 1 being horrible and 6 being excellent. There's 3.1, so it was a little bit below the average. I was 1 to 7, I mean. So, 3.5 would be average. So, it's a little bit below average, but the main comments were the existing sidewalks that we had here are, there's a number of sections in disrepair or blocked by something like trash cans and, or vegetation, things like that. And then the other comment was sidewalks are missing or discontinuous. So, I think everyone that went on the walk saw that was one of the things to probably work on down here. Was it easy to cross the streets? 2.8, just lower than that, than the previous one. So, we needed curb ramps to be put in and repaired. We needed curb ramps to be put in and repaired, we needed stripe, striping on the sidewalks or crosswalks or traffic signals, some way to make it safer to cross Franklin Street. And I think one of the comments was kids go to Dairy Shed or the library, and there's a lot of traffic going across that right there as well. So, you might want to look at in the future of how, how you can make the crosswalk more visible. I think we had one of those slides where what the driver sees coming up on a crosswalk and what the pedestrian sees. So, you might have to make sure it stands out to the driver. There's lots of technology now. My brother lives up in Washington State. They have a crosswalk in Olympia, Washington, where if a pedestrian comes out, and it detects a pedestrian, there's some lights that go across in the pavement there. They're put in like the markers, like you see that, paste-on markers they have. And so, it alerts the driver there's a pedestrian there. Zine, you had those flashing lights crossing Detroit and things like that. But there's other things, I mean, just make sure you see that there. So, that was one of the main things to work on. Did the drivers behave well? This is where Belbrook was above the average. The one, the comments we did get were they drove too fast, or they did not yield to pedestrians. And people have two brains, one when they're in a car and one when they're walking. I have those two brains, and I'm sure all of you, if you admit it, have those two brains too, that people are in your way, and the cars are in your way if you're a pedestrian. So, that's another thing to look at here. But that, Belbrook was above average on that, you have courteous drivers. Was your, oh, was it easy to follow the safety rule? Sorry. Crossing at the crosswalks came up and knocked that one down somewhat, 3.2. So, the crosswalks are a major issue. Was your walk pleasant? 3.6. We were, this is kind of up there, around the middle or above average a tiny bit. Needed more grass, flowers, trees, et cetera, and it's not well-lit, and there's some areas that were dirty, and there's litter or something that hadn't been picked up. So, but, but other than that, I think vegetation or some kind of a way to make it more pleasant for people that are actually standing downtown and doing things down here, which is something to look at. How does your neighborhood stack up? And this is the overall rating, 16.1 out of a total scale, and that's on the okay, but it needs work. It's not a horrible place to be, but it's not a place that's like downtown Yellow Springs where people want to come, and it's, you've got some people, places to sit outside and vegetation, and the crosswalks are marked well and things like that. So, those are the kind of things you need to look at generally. The focus of the recommendations are traffic calming, street scape, sidewalks, crosswalks, curb ramps, drainage. I don't know if some of you walked on there, east of, east on Franklin there, you had some street and a drainage and a sidewalk all kind of melded together, and so if there was, you could put in a curb system or something like that, you could provide more ample parking, separate pedestrians from traffic so no one could go off and easily get onto the sidewalk and just dress up the street somewhat that way. Parking, there are sections of parking, but if you, and I'll show this on a later slide there. It kind of disappears at the ends of downtown, and if you're looking for extra parking downtown, that may be a way, if you dress up the curbs and the road and make it a little wider, people can park all the way down to each end. Biking, it's not, I wouldn't say it's not pleasant, but it's challenging down here with all the ins and outs and all the so forth. There's no marked bike lanes or a way for bikes to wind through the alleys or marked way or something like that. Signage, I know there was a big discussion about Belbrook Plaza and how there's a sign out, but no one knows what's back there if you're not from Belbrook, and things like that, or how to get in and out of it marked very well. So, I think, in looking at the signage that came out. Residential connections is big, and I think everybody gets that. You've got all new developments going up on the hill, the vineyards of Belbrook and all that, and I think you're starting to work on a path coming in and so forth. And then there's park connections were brought up and property maintenance. This is the Big Banff, and it's the last page, so you have to paint it out. So, here, from here on, let's see, is that East Street? East Street on out, we need to kind of look at that drainage and parkage and so forth. And then also, from at least where the subway building is in front of Dots entrance, out to the intersection. And these are the main intersections or main crossing points that were suggested in the workshop, where make this a lot safer at only Sugar Creek Road, in front of Dots here, there's a chance that you could cross. There's a long, long distance between two streets here, so you'd have to provide some, people aren't going to walk all the way around across the street to go there. Two spots here is in front of the library, West Street, East Street, the main intersection in town here, and then some kind of safe pedestrian crossing, a traffic calming as you're coming in through the east of Washingtonville, and also the, and the west. Bike bridge option was mentioned. Looking for some public, more public parking to possibly look to behind the subway, there's some storefronts down below level if you can drive down. There's gravel right now, so there's some kind of an arrangement where there could be parking down there that might help the businesses down here and provide some extra space to get around downtown. Yeah, the big question about parking was the lot next to Dots. Oh, sorry. Was the, was the parking lot possibility to look at that between Dots and the Belbrook Plaza, since there was an attempt to look at the building and so forth in there, but nothing's been done at this point. Belbrook Plaza has the back of a lot of, there's a church, a funeral home, some other businesses here on Franklin. It's possible that this could be kind of like a little square area, if you could get some of the parking over here and make that, you could have fountain or some more vegetation or something in there to get people, like a little gathering place back in there. Right now, they all gather for the Dairy Shed and so forth, but some of the, but some of the owners in that plaza were willing to see that, something happen in that area. The library has a little green area next to it, so that's either make it more of a pocket park to use by the public, or maybe add some possibility for putting additional parking in over there as well. That's kind of an extreme one way or another, but I mean, it's something the city's got to decide in the, in the library as well. Pedestrian connection back from the library. And this plaza entrance where the big sign is, there's actually an entrance sign to come in over here, but you can't notice it very well. So, looking at how you come in and out of here, there's a possibility to use West Street a little more, and if you bring it over to Dots, some kind of an access arrangement, you could come out over here. And that adds sidewalks along West. Pedestrian comfort, when we stood at the main intersection in town, it was loud with the school buses and trucks and things going through in the traffic. So, if you could add some vegetation in there, we'd make it a little more pleasing, it maybe absorbed some of the sound and so forth. And I think the owner, McIntoshes, was, was really looking at, started to look at things of what could be done in that area. There's possibility to put street, more street parking in here. We'd have to look at the width of the street, but if there's anything redone, maybe allowing some parking, because there's some parking up north on Main, but it kind of disappears as you get to the south. I think that was because of the width of the pavement right now. Belrock Park, add sidewalks along the East Street and over here to Main Street, and then there's a, kind of a deteriorated asphalt path that goes up to the neighborhood, up to the north there. So, it's possible that there's a bike site path coming down here, but you could also divert and come over here, or these people would have more inclination to walk downtown if this was, made a more pleasant walk. And I think it's part, the city owns the property, and it's right next to the park as well. Safe pedestrian crossings up, up here, that we saw a lot of kids coming down from school trying to get to the Dairy Shed, so some, make sure there's some crossings safe on North Main. We have the drainage. And then we're just some suggestions maybe for some more pedestrian connections. You do have one up to the plats off of Washington Mill Road, so that was a good move by the city there. You've got an extra market coming in that way. And then also, another big idea was eventually being maybe put in a bike loop or a hiking loop around, and then tying it into Spring Lakes and Sugar Creek Reserve. The idea was Yellow Springs downtown, everybody comes there to do some hiking. You could come to downtown Belbrook, and that could be your origin and destination, and you could get something to eat and go home, something like that. So, that would also add to the city. And I think, just an overall with the workshop, a lot of the business owners and everything were very interested in this. When we were around taking photos, do I like to turn this on? They were very interested in the workshop, and a number of them showed up, and more wanted to come, but there were some time constraints for them on that day, so I think we've got a good thing started here. So, the next steps, and there's more detail on all that in the report. The next steps would be to develop a list of priority issues out of what we came up with here, with the costs and benefits. Make Franklin Street improvements a priority. I think most, everybody said, "Let's, you know, we've got to work with Franklin Street first, and then we can do, do some things off of that." And conduct traffic, bike, and pedestrian counts. If you can get a group together, and that can work with volunteers if they want to do it, is to sit out there at various times and just count the number of people crossing the street. And once you have definite data, then you have some hard facts that you can prevent, present to ODOT for talking about crosswalks and things like that, and safety improvements. It shows you've put forth the effort, and how many bikes are coming through, because I don't think we had anything. MBRPC said there were no definite counts of bikes and pedestrians in the area. And then improve access to the parks near downtown, is kind of a long-term, and that could be a cooperative effort with the township and the city and the park districts and so Look at, looking for education for grant types and processes. I think Matt gave a list of transportation-type grants. I'm looking at some other things that we can give to the city for leads on, maybe somewhere you can get some grants and book with things. You guys are not a member of Main Street program, right? Explore creative ways to fund the improvements. Approach the Chamber for shared parking agreements. That was one of the things that was brought up. There's a lot of parking. If they can have agreements among the owners, if there's, I know the funeral home can't really guarantee, you know, guess when somebody's going to be parking there, but, you know, if the churches meet at regular times, maybe there could be an agreement that people could park at certain times in church parking lot areas and so forth. Revise the zoning code sets of the sign section. I think they said the last time that was done was in the 90s or something. And then put in some standards for sidewalk and infrastructure in the plan update that we're going to be working in, so we'll see if we can throw that in there. But I wanted to tack on to the end of all of this. National Main Street program, there's, they have what they call a four-point approach. I don't know if any of you looked into this before. It's economic vitality, design, promotion, and organization. Those are the three point, or four points that you need to look at if you're going to be doing any kind of a downtown improvement. So, an economic vitality you want to look at. You want to take downtown Belbrook and call it, it's a unique sense of place. So, it's got to be a place that's identifiable, it's unique, it's a place where people want to come. You want to harness a local economic opportunity. So, in your case, I think you guys have already started to think about that with hooking at least the immediate neighborhoods in, and then if we can provide some parking promoting and so forth later on with that. Supportive environment for small business, and I know the Chamber of Commerce lady was very interested in that kind of an aspect. And then some downtown housing. And then some downtown housing, and you guys have some of that. I think I did a count, we did a count and you had, uh, a hundred and ninety-three dwelling units in the downtown area. And just the immediately hooked in neighborhoods, uh, there were seventy-four more, and that's not counting the stuff up on the hill or the vineyards and all that, if you can get all that. So you've got somewhat of a market build up pedestrian and bike wise there. And if they can do that, then you've got a few less cars coming into downtown to take up parking for other people. On the design of it, uh, you wanna pay attention to public spaces. Uh, you have control of those, the public spaces, what really defines a lot of the other, what goes on everywhere else. Pedestrian friendly streets, public art. Um, I think I showed you some examples of that, where that was done. I just couldn't believe when I went to Idaho Falls, Idaho, and they had all those benches around their walk, and they had a contest, and everybody came up with a different kind of bench and so forth. Um, and in Boston, I don't, I didn't have that slide, but they put in some plexiglass covers over one of their alleys to make it a more pleasant place, and you're protected from rain and snow, and it was colorful, like artistic type thing to walk through an alley. So just little things like that. Uh, visual merchandising, making sure that when people come through, there's stuff, and you've got a lot of big windows on some of the stores there that works. Um, adaptive reuse of the older historic structures. Uh, you've got a lot of them marked, and, uh, I think some of the owners of those were at the workshops, so hopefully they've got some incentive to try to work with the city in getting some of those up and running again. And then transit oriented development, you guys are not on a regular flec, or like regular line for green cats or anything. So, but eventually there may be a line to come this way, so you need to think of maybe a stop for that downtown, for people that can't drive and can't get around, but they may wanna come downtown for something. If you have a festival or, just if downtown becomes more special, they'll wanna be here. On the promotion, um, you wanna promote it as a center of the community, uh, make sure there's a positive image and showcase its unique characteristics on any information that you put out. Celebrate and preserve its important architecture and history, and you guys have done, gone a long way on that one. You've got the museum and you've got a big list, uh, historical structures and little plaques on everything. Uh, encourage a cooperative marking, marketing. Offer coordinated specials and sales. I don't know if you guys do that now downtown, but there's a downtown Bellbrook sale, like sidewalk sales type thing. Host special events. I know the Sugar Maple Festival used to be right downtown here. Communicate this place is special, and anything you put out about Bellbrook or downtown here, let's figure out a lot of days that's yours. And then the organization, which is a big part of it, um, I don't know how you wanna work it in the future, you have to look at there's, the different ways it's been done to have a standalone nonprofit group work on it, uh, and work with the city. Have a special assessment district if there's anything that needs to be paid for and so forth. Um, maybe, I don't know, the parking could be something, usually there's lighting or some other types of economic development programs. Um, a municipal program, whether it be housed in the city itself or a community development entity. Um, and so you wanna mobilize the partners involved, the funders and the volunteers that would be put in this and to implement it, so you, you have to make sure that they kind of work together on that, what's gonna incentivize them. Um, so the Main Street Program, as I said, had those four main points there, and they, they kind of always had separate ideas on them, but the, the thinking now is you wanna integrate, you have to do all this at kind of once. You can't just do little silo, what they call it, the new word is, I guess, silos. Put this in a silo here and a silo there. You have to have everything kind of works together. And hopefully in the workshop, you kind of saw the design of it works with the parking, you know, works with the, being able to merchandise or getting people in and out and so forth, so. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. You had a written version of it, and we will, I don't know if you wanna put it on your website, and then we'll put it up on our, like, projects. That's kind of it in a nutshell. I wanna take all evening. Any questions or?
Council, do we have any questions for Ken?
Good report. Looks like a lot of money we could spend on different things, but at least gives us some direction and focus on where to go and maybe where to get our, our best bang for our buck.
Yeah, and we pointed out in the workshop, some of this doesn't have to be with money right away. You can paint some ideas on the streets, like if you wanna do a bulb out or something, you could paint it or put some cones up for a while, put some planters out in the street where you don't want people to park or do anything, or maybe at a crosswalk you wanna keep it up somehow. And try that first and before you do all the expensive stuff.
But based on the turnout, it sounds like people are very much focused in improving downtown and seeing what options are out there, so that's the takeaway, I think.
Yeah, it was a, it was a good workshop. I couldn't do the actual walking tour, but was here for the, the first part of it, and it was a great turnout. So I know a lot of us were, were on it. Um, so it was great.
I, I was impressed with the turnout and the, the ideas that people had, and a lot of them kind of zeroed in on a lot of the same things as, as your slideshow. And I think, uh, heading it up and kind of going in that direction, you know, cost is whatever we want it to be, I guess, as far as how far we wanna go, but I think there'll be a lot of good things come out of it, maybe not even have to spend that much money. You know, money's a big issue. Uh, but, uh, the business community's really interested in it, and then, and the residents are interested in it. The connectivity and the walking is, are big items right now. People enjoy those, so.
And it's healthy.
It's healthy, yeah. So.
And, and this will be all part, one piece of the puzzle for our comprehensive plan, correct Mark?
Yes.
Yep.
I'd like to point out, if, if we had done this walkability study at the end of this week or next week, all those big pots in town will be planted, because we are planting Wednesday, uh, and at Christmas time they are filled with, uh, evergreens and pine cones and Christmas. So we do have some, um, planting and vegetation in town.
It just wasn't out.
It just wasn't out yet.
It's just not out yet.
Well, you need to take pictures when it's out then, so when we talk about this in the future, show what you've done.
Yeah, yeah, the garden club does it.
Yeah.
Mark, there were a lot of people there that kind of said, what are the next steps? So I guess I'd like for us to put this on our website and then try to figure out kind of how to answer that question.
Right, and, and, uh, Ken did send this out to everyone who attended also?
Okay.
So anyone who, and they were made aware that he was going to come this evening to speak about it?
Okay.
Um, but yeah, we will definitely put it on the, on the website, and then, yeah, that'll, that will be a conversation we'll have to have in the future about, okay, where do we go now that we have, uh, some more information?
And, and it wouldn't all have to be city council driven. Like if, if we did go to the chamber meeting and say, hey, we'd like to talk about parking, you know, a way to, you know, figure out how to share parting or to, to use the parking bit, so we do have better, maybe we could start something within the chamber.
Right, and I think, I think ultimately council needs to have some direction as to what, that, that, I, I don't think council needs to be the one to do it all, but council can give some guidance as to what, what areas to focus on first and, and where to, where to start that conversation and who, depending on what it is, who gets involved. Um, if it's something like that, then obviously the chamber, maybe some of the businesses and, um, I, I know crosswalks is, was obviously a big item of, of discussion, but where do we really want to see them and how do you want to mark them? Because you can go from anything, which is what we have today, which is two straight white lines to, you know, flashing signals and everything else. So there, there's gotta be a conversation at some point as to, we, we can't endanger people by giving them a false sense of security because you've now painted white lines and put flashing things, and then they think they can just walk across the street. So there's a lot more to, to those conversations that have to happen to figure out what, what works.
And also, I don't know, since, I know parking is a big deal and that's a lot of private pop, private property, are there any sections that the city could, I'm not trying to spend the city's money, but are there any places that we could say, okay, this is city-owned public parking?
Well, and I think, uh, Mr. Greenwood, I think, brought up at one point, like down at, on Northwest Street where the service garage is, you know, there's after hours, that's an area that we could potentially mark that, that people could park there, because as long as they don't block, uh, our way and things like that, that's an area that, similar to what, what Ken was saying, that, you know, it has certain hours that are used, but then the rest of the time it's, it's pretty much open, so.
I think you definitely need to find someone to champion this and someone to gather all the interested stakeholders and prioritize the things that are in the report. And I, I think the first thing is, like Ken alluded to, just look for some easy wins, something that we can, something that group could put together and do and start the process. Then something that isn't gonna be prohibitively expensive, something that would make a difference. But I def, we definitely need someone to champion it. And I don't know that it should be council or the city, we need someone, I think we should definitely be involved, but I think there's, we need people to step up and, and start.
We have these different, you know, committees though, you know, we have the, you know, village review board, and we have the planning board, I mean, what if we had like a, I don't know. And maybe we already have that sort of with the, um, the downtown or the, what?
Well, the village review board, but that really serves a, a slightly different function because it's more of a approval and, and that type of thing. But yeah, you could certainly, uh, form some type of committee, board, temporary in nature or permanent nature, whatever you wanna do. Ultimately, they're gonna wanna know how much money they have to spend, is what they're gonna wanna know and what, you know, they can, there, there's certain things they can do that don't cost a lot of money, but most of the things that are in this report are gonna cost money, um, and take, take resources to do that.
Well, I think if people pri, if we prioritize or get that group to prioritize what it is they want to do, and then we can sort of come in, back into the money part of it and see what's, what's feasible and what's completely not feasible.
Yeah, I, I agree.
If you gave them a budget or set a budget to go spend it, but we need to find out what's, you know, what's really feasible for a community our size.
Mm-hmm.
I think, uh, Mr. Edwards brought up a real good point. And in the beginning, if we did get some easy wins, that kind of gets some momentum going. I think that's a good point.
And I can give you links to some communities that have done that if you, if anybody here would wanna call somebody up and see how they did it, or anybody's got questions like that, I think we could find them, MBRPC could as well too.
I think it's a good place to start, and it's an actionable, actionable plan, um, where we can, um, potentially jump out in front of it, but we do need to get the community involved and, and get their input and potential help on, like Nick said. And that, that'll be a lot of the organizations who will benefit from it too. You know, you've got Sugar Maple Chamber of Commerce, Lions Club, um, a number of organizations that, um, would benefit along with the business owners, so. A lot of things to talk about moving forward. It was nice to get the report done, and it's got some very fine points and some very good recommendations. Anything else? Thank you very much again, Ken. Great presentation, and, uh, we will, I'm sure be in contact and see what kind of things we can get moved forward.
We'll continue with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, we'll be working with the plan.
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Um, moving on this evening, no public, public hearings, no introduction ordinances, no resolutions, city manager's report.
Uh, yes, a couple items. First, uh, some people may have been contacted over the past week with telephone survey, uh, that was conducted by a consultant. Uh, they did conclude that survey last week. They've got, uh, three hundred, uh, completed, uh, surveys, uh, so they're working compiling that information, and they'll have that information to us here over the next couple of weeks. Um, so we'll have that information to, to talk about at our June twelfth, uh, workshop, uh, when we're gonna talk about, uh, future levy, uh, ideas and, uh, things like that. So we'll have that feedback at that point from, uh, from the consultant. Um, piggybacking on that, the summer schedule, so the, our next meeting is not for three weeks because, uh, uh, next Monday is holiday, but it's June twelfth. Uh, that one, we're just planning to do a work session, so it won't be a regular meeting cause we're gonna have the police department come and do some demonstrations. They're gonna give us some, uh, information on the body worn cameras, uh, then we can have a discussion about the levy, uh, ideas for, uh, the fall. Um, and then on, uh, June twenty-sixth and July tenth, we'll have our regular meetings. Um, July twenty-fourth, there will not be a meeting, so in, in July, the only meeting will be on July tenth. And then in August, the, the, the schedule would be the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth. So if you can just look and let us know if one of those is a conflict with vacations, uh, anything like that, we can, uh, we can schedule appropriate for the August meetings. Um, but that is all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our city manager?
Mayor, I just wanted to commend and recognize city manager for being named the fiscal agent for our medical insurance pool. It's a nice little, uh, I think, indication of the respect they have for it and some of the financial things you've done for them, and it's gonna reduce our fees by about fifteen thousand dollars a year, so it's a, it's a win-win, so congratulations.
Yeah, I don't get to generate much revenue, but that's, that's one that I was.
It's a very, very recent.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mike.
It's actually the increase in the fee.
Yeah, I, I forgot about that.
Yes, exactly.
So that, that was very impressive.
Yeah.
Uh, anything else for our city manager? Going on, committee reports, service?
Nothing tonight.
Safety?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'd just like to bring up a few points. This coming weekend, or coming up to Memorial Day, uh, kind of beginning of the summer season, uh, people just need to be extra careful, you know, a lot of activities start, school will be out, um, pretty soon, and, uh, just, I hope everybody's safe and, uh, place some fires ready to go in case they do need people, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Finance and audit, Mr. Roller?
Nothing to report this evening, Mayor.
Community fairs, looks like we have one item.
We have one item. The, um, we interviewed three, um, residents for, uh, the village review board. All good, uh, folks, but we, it, depending on their, looking at the cons, um, what's the word I'm looking for? The, the folks who are already on the board, uh, we decided that Jeff Owens would be the recommended appointment because of his, um, experience and broad, um, scope of, of knowledge in, in real estate and, um, value of property and that type of thing. So, um, we recommend that Jeff Owens be appointed to the village review board with his term that expires January thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
And that is a motion?
That is a motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to appoint Jeff Owens to the village review board. Term expires one thirty-one nineteen, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Anything else for community fairs?
Uh, one thing I did forget to add, add that, uh, Mr. Owens lives in the Stephen Bell House, so he is the second person on the village review board who is in the city, and we only are required to have one. So I'm in the old village.
Cool.
So we got double duty.
That's great. Uh, moving on, any old business? New business? We have one item on the agenda tonight, that's to authorize the city manager to solicit bids for waste collection and recycling services.
Yes, our contract with, uh, Rumkey expires at the end of this year. Uh, we are going to do a joint bid, uh, with, uh, several other communities in the Dayton area. Uh, Miami'sburg was part of our joint bid the last time, uh, Brookville will be part of our bid this time, and West Carrollton is going to join, but they're only going to do it for, uh, recycling services. Uh, they do their own, uh, trash collection, but they wanna join the bid for recycling services. So, uh, they're in the process of developing those bid specifications, uh, they will go out here in the next week or so, uh, with a due date by early July. So we're hoping, uh, by getting those communities together, we'll get some good competition. The last time we were, we did this joint bid, there were some, uh, communities from the Cincinnati area and the Dayton area. We got some feedback that some of those, some of the, the, the vendors, the contractors couldn't bid because of union issues in two different markets and things like that, uh, but we hope to alleviate that and get some competitive bids for our pricing. Uh, we anticipate that the price will go up because the price for recyclables has gone down, the need for, with the lower price of oil, uh, the price for plastics has gone down, recycled plastics has gone down, so that's gonna be factored in. But, uh, we anticipate it'll go up some, but hopefully we can, uh, moderate that to a certain extent.
Um, so with that, may I have a motion to reckon, or authorize city managers to solicit bids for waste collection and recycling services?
Second.
Second. And roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to authorize the city manager to solicit bids for waste collection and recycling services, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes, so I think we've got really competitive rates before, so hopefully they'll continue.
That's the hope.
That's the hope. Open discussion, Nick?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Forrest?
I just wanted to bring up one thing about the walkability. The old elementary school we have here in town, we don't actually have control of, I know, but, and it has uses that's going on there, and that's good. And my thoughts, it would be nice in the future if something, if that building was to be turned into maybe something like a nursing school, or something that would possibly create an anchor for the old village, where people would, you know, go to school, and it's a, I think it's a beautiful piece of real estate, it's a nice setting, it's quiet, it's safe. That's just some of my thoughts I'd share with people about that school, because it's kind of like a diamond in the rough, I think, it's really, it's, and I know it's being used, and it's, but in the future, I hate to see it be turned into something like, cut into apartments or something like that, because it is a nice piece of property, so.
And I've had a conversation with the schools about that, right now, they have no plans to sell that building, it's really for them, it's their safety net, so to speak, based on the growth of the community, and they may need it to bring it back into service for their use at some point.
And that would be great, I mean, I just thought I'd bring these thoughts up.
No, that's, but it's a good point, it's something that sits there, but they don't have any plans to sell it, but if they could get a long-term tenant, particularly in the old, older portion of that building there, I think they would be open to that, too, if something like that were to happen, where they still have the flexibility to use it if they need to.
Right. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Couple of quick items, I echo the earlier comments that Mr. Greenwood made concerning the summertime activities, be watchful, got a couple of weeks here, days left before school's out, kids will be going nuts with the summer vacation upon us, watch out for motorcycles on a road. The other day, I just, I witnessed a potential crash that could have occurred up by Little Sugar Creek where somebody wasn't paying attention, and a cycle came through. And the other thing is that in your neighborhood's residents, you know, make use of the police department's vacation check program, and that'll help keep the neighborhood safe, everything.
Very good points.
Yep, nothing, nothing further.
Mike?
Nothing for tonight, Mayor.
I don't think I have anything, other than when everyone have, please have a nice, safe Memorial Day. With that, we do open this up to the public, if anyone would like to come up, and it's been a couple of meetings.
Yes, it has.
Please say your name and your address.
Myrna Herzog, 255 Upper Hillside, Bellbrook, Ohio. I want to bring up why this uniform sign has not been removed from in front of the store on the corner, they've been gone for quite a while now, and that sign can be misleading if somebody is coming into town and don't know that they've moved, and you don't know until you get up almost practically across from the store, and then you see it's empty, and there's a, I don't know, for sale or for rent sign in the window, and that sign, you know.
I can't see the sign, you'd think that it'd be, make more sense to have that sign down and a for rent sign there.
And that sign should come down, since they're not there.
I see Mr. Schlagheck writing it down as we speak.
Yes.
We can call Cheryl.
And my other concern is talking about the walkability and the parking in the plaza. It would be nice if all the stores there would allow people to use their parking spaces once they close, because I have come past there when dance studio is in session, and they park anywhere which way they want.
The only issue there is that's all privately owned other than the alley.
Yeah.
So that would be up to Mr. Coe and the tenants and their contracts, some of them do have specific, Dog Room used to have one, I know that Blueberry Cafe has a sign for pickup and some other stuff, but one, with a dance studio and, or a funeral, a big funeral, there's not much parking in, yeah, if I was one, it was one of those businesses, I would probably want to have that.
Because I came by the other day when they were in session, and this car was just parked randomly, you know.
Sure.
And sometimes they block, so you can't go through that way, you can't get from dots going through the road there all the way, you know, to get out by the bank.
And, you know, there's not a lot we can do about that other than the alley part of it. We do actually have an alley there, but running through the middle of it, but everything else is private.
But I know the police have been called about the parking in front of the dance studio.
Oh, I'm sure they probably have, I'm sure, because it gets so crowded, I don't know what they can do about it, but.
If they're blocking.
They'll probably politely ask and go up and talk to them.
If they're blocking, you know, from a fire or police response or something like that, then they can have a move, but other than that.
Yeah, that's different, yeah, if there is, if it's obstructing a potential emergency, you know, fire truck or something like that, they would definitely say something. But if I see Brian, I'll talk to him about it, too. That's a good point, I would assume that some, that topic has come up.
And now with Dairy Shed open.
Oh, yeah.
It's even worse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll get crazy with Dairy Shed, and then if you have a dance studio at the same time, it'll be, it will be crazy.
Kind of jockey for the closest parking spot.
And Bellhop can get busy, too.
Yeah.
So they have designated parking, but there's some, you know, that can be busy, too. So, well, thank you very much for the input.
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Louis, motorcycles?
I foresee a. I'm Louis Schatzberg, I live at 482 Ridgetop Drive, and I did participate in the walkability study, and I thank the city for taking the time out of the schedules and to get that scheduled so that the citizens of Bellbrook can have an opportunity to give input as to what they think can be done with the city, instead of sitting back saying, boy, I wish the city would do something, and this way here gives them the opportunity to come and talk to the city and say, hey, why don't you do this, or why don't we do this? And maybe out of this, we'll get people that'll come out and maybe want to help redesign some of this and make the city better than it is today. But I thank Mark and city council for allowing this to take place in the time out of the busy schedules of everybody that did it, I thought it was a great study, and I think there's a lot of good information that came out of it, so.
Thank you, Louis, and it was a very good turnout, this room was packed.
You know, Louis' comments, though, triggered something for me, is that it wasn't just Bellbrook citizens, it was Sugar Creek Township as well as all the businesses, so I wonder if there's any way, because I think, you know, this downtown is not just the city's downtown, it's the township's downtown as well, if there's any way to work with them as far as funding goes, if we are going to make certain improvements, if there was some cooperative way that we could make things happen that way, and I know I'm pipe dream, but some way to work together on that.
I think that's part of the big picture stuff, at our last meeting, we met with the park district, the township, the schools, all together, and that's one of the things the township did bring up, was to work on that walkability factor and make some of these paths connected to the township paths, because they have all the new, safe, what's the?
Safe routes to school.
Safe, what?
Safe routes to school.
Safe route to school sidewalks, and Barry was talking about potentially how those could potentially extend and loop, and so I think that's a very good idea, and I think that we sort of had the door opened already, we just need to make sure to follow up. Does anyone else have anything? I don't not, I don't see anyone else here, so I seriously doubt, does any member on council have any other business to come to Forrest's?
More voices.
Yeah.
We're in trouble.
Yeah, does anyone on council have anything else to come to Forrest's evening?
No.
If not, this meeting is adjourned.